Get on with our meeting here. I call order the Stokes Reynolds Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees meeting for December 13th, 2021, 4:30 PM. Please stand and I'll do the invocation. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of meeting here today. We ask that you give us strength, wisdom, and guidance as we conduct the county's business and that of the hospital. Please be with those less fortunate than us and be with those who are deployed outside of the country protecting us in your most gracious name we ask it. Amen. Form me the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion for that?
Good motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It says unanimously. Does anybody sign up for public comments, Kristy? There would have nobody for public comments. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and those were provided. If you need a few minutes to review them, we can do that before we vote on minutes. Aye. Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. And let me read next is the ethics conflict of interest statement. It is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearance of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any of the matters coming before the board today? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter involved. Any conflicts? Okay, no conflicts. The next item on the agenda is the land transfer discussion. I don't know, I don't think we've had this discussion with you guys. I think just myself and Ty and Kristy maybe discussed this, but there's an email in here like this on page, it's got page one back there with a D on the back of it if you hadn't had a chance to look at it. What it is basically, there's a tract of land up with a hospital that is in the name of Stokes Reynolds Memorial Hospital Incorporated, and the rest of the hospital land is all under the name of Stokes County. And so Ty is recommending that we take that tract and also might put it under Stokes County instead of Stokes Reynolds Memorial Hospital Incorporated.
Is there a reason behind that? Why Ty was suggesting doing this?
I think kind of just housekeeping sort of basically more than anything else, just to, we don't have that outlying tract under one entity and all the rest of it under the other.
It's the whole campus hospitals address, even though it's Stokes Reynolds County.
Okay.
And it says the rest of the properties that are hospital facilities are under the name of Stokes County.
If you guys need some more clarification, we can get Ty to provide that as well before we do anything on it.
It is not going to make a difference either way on taxes or anything like that because both states count in anyway correct.
The county except for, where it comes from, it's already using the property.
Oh, it would make any kind of transaction we do in the future up there, real estate wise or hospital wise or whatever, just a cleaner transaction as well if it's all under the county's name. We don't need to take action on it today. This is to make you guys familiar with it. If you want to, we could put it on the action agenda for the next board of trustees meeting. Give you time to talk to Ty if you want to or get any additional information from him.
So no problem with it.
You want to do that or?
That's fine. I don't have a problem with it.
Do you, does, you guys need further explanation if specific questions we need to ask Ty or?
I'm not sure if it's going to need a quick claim D from Stokes Reynolds County, and if so, it will sign that. It will need to sign that so we'll know exactly if you are taking action items.
Okay.
This has been done, this has got to go through the proper stuff before, like having it surveyed and everything else, even though it's, even though it's under two different county names, it's still owned by the county. Does all it still have to be surveyed and laid out and everything else?
Might be a question for Ty probably.
I don't believe so. I don't think it require, but we asked that question though.
It's like it's just changing name, but it's the same entity. It's kind of confusing.
What we could do is ask Ty if there's, if there's any cost associated with doing this, other than just the transfer.
That's about the only thing I'm curious about.
Okay. Okay, so do you guys want to put it on the action agenda for the January trustee, board trustees meeting then? Then we can discuss it further if we need to.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what we'll do. Okay, the next, excuse me, I'm kind of hoarse today. The next one, next item is the Stokes Reynolds Memorial Hospital Operations Committee update. Pam, do you want to update anything before we get to the alternate HOC members? Or anything you have to update them on?
I just wanted to update, since the last meeting, we were working on the CMS mandate and implementing our policies and procedures to allow exemptions. We did follow through with all that process, even though I think the day after we did all the exemptions, the state of Louisiana did a nationwide hold, so the mandate is on hold now, but we had, we went ahead and had already gone through everything, so we're going to keep that active.
Still made your life easier though, didn't it?
Took a little pressure off. We did have two employees that separated by their choice. They did not feel like they wanted to request either exemption that we made available, and either wanted to take a break from health care or leave health care altogether. And then other designations, we had people just apply to see what was out there during the process. We feel like we've gotten in place if they do institute it, it will just be a matter of us following our procedures.
There's probably a good possibility courts may stop this permanently, but they haven't yet, so.
And when people's loaded hospital, I mean, in that way, it's rough.
The list, because they may get to be contractors and all providers were on the train about according to, those would not all be employees, but by the time they have contracts associated with people that we work with, that this mandate.
Any other questions on that? Anything else Pam besides what next agenda item here? And the next item is the board approval here of our alternate, two of our alternate HOC members, Justin Duncan and Debbie Vaden. Just a reminder, Justin is the, he works for Novant, I think in the maintenance area, and he's a pastor at a church down in Wallaco. Debbie Vaden is a registered nurse that I think has worked in several hospitals around the country. And they're, they're the two alternates that we signed up so far. We meant to bring this to the board earlier. The HOC approved them, but we meant to bring them last time, we didn't do it, but we just need this board's approval for them as alternates. And we also, what we're, only thing we're missing now is a person from Sandy Ridge. And with the town hall out there, there was somebody that expressed interest, but they hadn't followed through yet, so.
They haven't submitted their application.
But we'll, we'll keep that open. That's the one geographic area that doesn't have a, have a representative on the HOC, so that would be the third alternative, if somebody shows up.
Pinnacle have somebody?
Uh, no, we, we've got two from King, and I'm not sure if that's how close they are at Pinnacle, those two. Jack's one of them, or where they live, but.
Well, I have a question. So Justin Duncan and Debbie Vaden have already been serving as alternates. This is just to formally approve them?
Just to formally approve them, yeah. They haven't voted or anything, they've just been observing what we're doing.
Right. Does Debbie Vaden work at the hospital?
Yeah.
So is it my understanding then that it doesn't matter if they are employed at the hospital, they can still serve on this committee? Anybody that's employed at the hospital could possibly serve on this committee then?
Yeah, we haven't eliminated that. We haven't really made any conditions about where people work or anything. It's basically just been.
Well, I've heard both being said that you couldn't serve on this committee if you were a hospital employee, but then I also know that Greg and Debbie work up at the hospital, so I would, and I didn't see in the bylaws where it said a hospital employee could not serve on the committee.
No, I think that's fine, but plus any worry. I don't think we have any restrictions on employment. The basic, the basic thing for looking for them was geographically where they live and then if they had business or medical expertise. That's kind of the two areas that we were looking for. Most everybody sort of fits one of those.
The bylaws also say that, that the term is a two-year term. So if that's the case, then when this committee was put together two years ago in February, would not all these people need to be, come off and new people go on or reshuffled or how do you? I don't know, I'm just asking because of what the bylaws says, two-year terms.
Yeah, I don't think we staggered the terms. I think they would either have to be re-appointed or put new people in, but.
May I speak?
Hmm?
The five at large, they were just approved by the board of commissioners on September 14th of 2020. So they technically have, what, another year to serve for the five at large?
Okay.
Because I, once you all approved them, they were sent like Walker letters and your approval date and so forth.
Gotcha.
I got one question. If the alternates were wanting to get on that board, just say if we were like approve them now, would that right there come up? If they was wanting to get on the actual board and not being an alternate, could they do that? Even though their two, two-year term's not up?
Yeah, I think so. They could, they could become, we could have somebody leave the board and them replace them, yeah.
I just didn't want to lock them out of something if they was wanting to get on that board and say, well, you're locked into this for two years and you can't, you know?
That would be a logical thing to do. We probably would be better off by having, you know, new people on the board, not keeping the same ones a long time, so that would be a logical thing to have these folks, if somebody didn't want to serve after their first term, to have one of these folks put on there. Or alternates put on there. And we're authorized one more alternate, and that would be, like I said, Sandy Ridge, we can find somebody. I don't think we divided it up like by Pinnacle. We kind of, how do we do it? It was like, it was like the four corners in the middle, sort of, is trying, sort of how the areas were looked at.
Gotcha.
They elected officials, I'm not sure when their elections are, I guess that.
Yeah, that could.
Yeah, that would also impact it. Any other questions on that? You want to move that to action today, or we could also wait and approve that in January, whatever you want to do.
When did theirs come up?
When they what?
When did their term actually come up?
When they start.
Yeah.
I think it's, uh, October.
April, okay.
I just, since this April, don't seem to be any hurry. I'd like, can we just put on the next one, do all this at once?
No problem. They're participating and observing what we're doing anyway, so.
That's fine.
Okay, the next, and if we get a third person from Sandy Ridge, somebody that applies, we'll let you know at the next meeting. Hopefully they will by then. The next thing is town hall meeting update. There were six of those scheduled, and we did the fifth one today down at the Arts Place, and that one was live streamed, so you can go back and look at it. It's on, I think it's on, I think Tori said it would be on the hospital.
It's on the Stokes County Arts.
Stokes County Arts. What is it? Facebook page?
Yeah.
And then I think he said they were going to put it on the hospital Facebook page.
Yeah, I think we've shared it, or we were sharing it during, I don't know how that works.
Okay. Anyway, if you know.
Tori was working on it.
That's Tor, right?
I don't know how that works, so.
We had a good turnout today, probably 50 something people I think were there.
I counted 51, but they're.
So with, with all the town halls so far, I would, I'm thinking between 150 and 200 people have showed up so far. And we have one, we have one coming up this week in King on Thursday night at 7 o'clock at Recreation Acres. The objective, I guess now, is to try to get a, try to get the one done in King now and then give you guys some kind of a report on the first meeting, on that board trustees meeting in January. Kristy's been taking copious notes about everything that was said, every comment that was made, every question, every whatever, so we'll take all those plus what the folks in King say, put that in some kind of report to you guys. Basically just give you raw feedback on, on what, what people had to say, what their comments were, and any other informa, anything else you'd like to see in the report, like a comp, a report.
I'd just like to see basically, set us an input, what they said during the meeting, what, what type of questions they ask y'all.
Okay. And we, we recorded all of that part of the one today too. All the questions and answers and everything were recorded along with the presentation today on the live stream, so you can get some direct feedback by looking at that one. And then the, the next follow-on, logical follow-on question after that is after you get this information and look at it, we had talked about, I think Sonya talked about doing further surveying if we need to. I guess that would kind of be the question, do you, what do you think we ought to do next? After you had a chance to digest the feedback that was obtained during the town halls, do we need more detail, more detailed survey or whatever? Figure out what, what the path forward should look like for this, so.
After we get the report, I think then we'll know more how to proceed.
Okay.
I'm interested to see all the comments and the notes and the feedback.
That gives me people to come in King as you can this week if y'all see folks, so we have a big turnout there.
I guess we'll bait and lanch just to really see what people want, you know, as far as the depth of the hospital, what all, what more can we look at in the future and stuff like that, that kind of stuff. But one thing about these meetings, and I've seen some negative stuff I hear about this, about these meetings, and most of it was slammed towards some of those commissioners. And I'm sorry if I was supposed to attend all these and I didn't. I actually thought this was for the committee to do and to bring the feedback to us. I understand Commissioner Morris is on this board, you know, but again, I apologize if we was all supposed to be there, but I thought that was the whole purpose of this committee to bring it back to us, you know, let them do their job and then bring it back to us and we'll do our job, you know, so.
There wasn't any mandate for you guys to be there or anything, you could if you wanted to.
Right, I thought it was just volunteer.
You're going to get the information.
I'll be there Thursday, this Thursday.
Greg, I knew you were going to bring all the information back to us.
Yeah, they are, that's exactly, that was the plan.
I was just planning on attending the closest one to me. I mean, it's basically all the same type of thing, so.
Thursday, Thursday, that really might tie it up.
There you go. You'll be retired soon.
12 days.
12 days.
I'd heard the same thing. People ask why we weren't there, and I just kind of said, well, what you discussed in the board trustees meeting, and you had also said something about the advisory board was going to go out, or advisory committee was going to go out and talk all this and bring it back. So I had said the same thing, so I was, it was, won't know why I wasn't there at Sandy Ridge. I said, well, I was up next to West Virginia working, kind of hard to get back for that in time, but I would love to have been there, I just couldn't. But I didn't, it was kind of pointless for us to be there because there wasn't nothing we could really do at that time. So yeah, do apologize if anybody took a fence step, but I thought the whole board was on a consensus on the same thing, that we were really what we're going to be at these meetings, all the feedback was coming back to us.
Well, it was definitely coming back to you, that's, that's for sure, so. Plus, anybody wants to, like I said, look at the one that was done today. Can't get to one of them, that'd be fine too. That'd be one way to get to one of them, or see what was said at one of them. And then the other part of that, the other logical thing with that is to get that, get this information and figure out what people want, because without the requirements, you can't really start to put a price estimate on what, what all this is going to cost. And I had a question along that line today, that how much was it going to cost? And like I said, until we get some, we get an understanding of what, what it is we're doing, we can place it. And this should hopefully help us, give us a step in that direction at least to understand what, what, what the cost might be, a rough order of magnitude anyway.
It's a step in the right direction.
Are any other questions on that? Okay, we need to go on closed session for just a few minutes, and you read that, you read that, Kristy, though.
Okay, General Statute 143-318.11, closed session. Number one, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential, pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States, are not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes.
Make a motion, we're going to close.
All in favor say aye. Opposed? Go on closed session.
Well, it was definitely coming back to you, that's for sure. Plus, anybody wants to, like I said, look at the one that was done today. Can't get to one of them, that'd be fine too. That'd be one way to get to one of them or see what was said at one of them. And then the other part of that, the other logical thing with that is to get that, get this information and figure out what people want. Because without the requirements, you can't really start to put a price estimate on what all this is gonna cost. And I had a question along that line today that, how much was it gonna cost? And like I said, until we get some, we get an understanding of what it is we're doing, we can place it. And this should hopefully help us, give us a step in that direction at least to understand what the cost might be, a rough order of magnitude anyway.
It's a step in the right direction.
Are there any other questions on that? Okay, we need to go into closed session for just a few minutes. And you read that, you read that, Kristy, though.
Okay, General Statute 143-318.11, closed session. Number one, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States are not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes.
Make a motion, we're going to close.
All fair say aye. Close, go into closed session.
Meeting adjourned.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose no meeting adjourned. Till the next meeting.